Ready on the right.
Ready on the right.
Ready on the left. It is nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We do follow the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. We'll also be meeting at 9:15, again, following the Open Meetings Act as amended. Our first quarter of business today is open with prayer. And Kent, I hate springing this on you early, but would you mind offering first?
Let's do it. Please join me if you wish. Heavenly Father, we come to you today with great appreciation for all that you bestow upon us as we approach the Memorial Day weekend. May we be aware of why we have a Memorial Day weekend and celebrate it in the fashion and give it the respect that it deserves, not just a reason to have a three-day weekend. Be with us today as we deliberate and consider decisions for this county and the citizens therein. Be with our first responders, both here and abroad, who protect our many freedoms. Also, with our foreign rescuing local police. Provide guidance and strength and protection for them as they serve this public as well. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Kent. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Board of Commissioners meeting held May 13, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held May 13, 2024.
Second. Motion to second. Any discussion? Rule call vote, please. Tammy?
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is to consider the claims and appraisers receipts as presented. I know that we had those in our agenda packets. I would entertain a motion if you are ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and treasurers receipts as presented.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Rule call vote.
Uller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item, authorize the chairman to sign the Blue Cross, the Blue Shield Renewal Application for Health Insurance.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize you to sign the Blue Cross, Blue Shield Renewal Application for Health Insurance.
Second. Motion to second. Discussion.
I wanted to just clarify for the record that the total employees eligible for this is at 145, and just making sure that it's clear that that does not include our union employees, the FOP, that if they -- and I know that we do have some informational meetings established and scheduled, that if they attend and determine that they want to participate in the changes of this, that we would have to go into negotiations with them.
Absolutely. Yep. Okay. Other questions, comments? Rule call vote, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
No.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is a special designated permit, liquor license application submitted by Aiden Enterprises Sutherland Longhorn Bar for an event July 27, 2024 to be held at Hanging H Lodge. Question for our --
Don't beat one.
For our deputy clerk, do we know if law enforcement was or made aware of this? I noticed in the past, you know, they -- I don't think they've been getting notice. I talked to the sheriff, and I think that we have one of these on, just to say we probably should let them know that it's on the agenda. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay.
Is there a check with the application?
Not yet. After.
This is just a local recommendation on an approval, correct?
Yes. Has Mr. Aiden been before us before?
That's what I'm trying to recall. They have -- yes, they have.
He does a good job.
He does a really good job.
Okay.
And I know that they are trained. I mean, the Longhorn Bar does a lot of stuff with the FOP after their events. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve and authorize signature on the special designated liquor license application submitted by Aiden Enterprises Sutherland Longhorn Bar for an event on July 27, 2024 to be held at the Hanging H Lodge.
I'll second that and note that they've made entry upon entry. IDs will be checked and wristbands given. Security will be at entrances, exits, and throughout the event.
Any other questions, comments?
Where is the Hanging H Lodge?
West of town, Highway 30.
Okay.
You can see all the buildings from the highway.
Hanging H used to own it. It's now Silver Spurs, but they still call it the Hanging H Ranch.
They had their --
It's a wedding venue now.
They had cancer.
Oh, the -- Neil Hansen is the one that --
Catalun's or whoever sponsors that cancer fundraiser every year. They had their Hanging H one year.
Okay.
But it's off the -- I mean, the buildings are off enough, far enough off the road. It's not like you're going to park along a highway and go into an event you're not screened and welcome.
There is parking in the pastures.
Yeah.
It's for a wedding that will be attended, so.
Your comments? Rule call vote, Tammy?
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Next item is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Warner Spray Foam for work at the Lincoln County Department of Roads. We're aware of that. I would entertain a motion if you're so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion authorizing you to sign the contract with Warner Spray Foam for work at the Lincoln County Department of Roads.
Second. Motion to second. Questions or comments? Do we know when this will be done?
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. I do not have a date as of yet, but I know they are pretty anxious to get in there and get it done, so I would assume it's going to be --
And this can be done, do you guys have to be out of the building when that happens?
No, we just have to have all of our equipment cleared out of the building, so yeah, it shouldn't be a problem to schedule it with them.
I would like to remind everyone that this is the DED, the Department of Energy's voucher program that myself, Jason, Becky, Tammy, Judy, and Kevin were part of the committee that decided to go after this funding to weatherize county buildings, so that's part of this program.
No, I think there will probably be savings also. The county won't have to buy as many winter coats for people who work in the shop. Would that be better?
Yes.
Should probably also reduce our energy bill over there.
Rule call vote.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you, McHale, for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Next item is a right-of-way application submitted by Ryan Schur.
There is a check accompanying the application.
20210.
Pardon me?
20210 on the check. 20210. This looks to be a water line.
Yep, it's a water line bore under the county road, so pretty simple.
Jason, curious how our work is coming along on the drug, collecting of all the drawings and CAD plans and everything else with all of our permits and the building out of digital mapping of all --
We're still in the process of collecting them as they are completed and coming in, but we haven't proceeded with anything as far as how to incorporate those digitally into anything we have, so.
So are they submitting those to us digitally? That's what we're supposed to have?
They're supposed to be, yes.
Have they been?
Some entities have been submitting those digitally. Others have not, so.
At some point, we need to kind of, this is me speaking, put a foot down and say no more. And I have a note down here on the bottom that I think that we need to make sure that people are compliant. We're going to go through and take the time to have these standards. I think that we need to make sure that people comply and that we, we make them comply. The other thing I noticed is it calls for the company should furnish construction drawings and engineering plans showing the precise locations of the lines buried and constructed, as well as legal description, et cetera. That's our number one thing. It says right there. What I see for our legal description of where it's placed is about a quarter of a mile from McFadden, let's see, from McNichol Road on the road going into Farnham, but that's, that certainly isn't what we are requiring of people. So when are we going to start making people comply before we ask the county to give a permit?
Well, I think that's, I think we should start doing that right away.
Would you do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions?
When was the last time? This was just recently reviewed and updated, correct?
I'd say six months.
Six months ago.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
In some of these, I guess, just to note too, I guess, in my opinion, some of these crossings, like this one here, it's going to be marked on both sides with, they're just simply crossing the right-of-way, so I don't know that we would require a digital file showing the location of that because it's going to be marked on both sides. And it's something that we've kind of have in our plan anyway, as were, that I've coordinated with the county surveyor as well, that if they're in the areas of these, we can capture those points and mark those lines to have those digitally to incorporate into a map as well.
My point, when we first started the conversation with requiring the construction and getting everything digitally mapped, is over time, those markings have a tendency to go away, and I want to make sure that we have a record maintained of where all things are in our county right-of-way when it comes to the different types of infrastructures. So that way, your successor and everybody is on the same page, and we're not doing work years down the road and causing disruption. So I would ask, you have the tab with GIS for the county roads department. I would maybe have a conversation with them and find out what steps need to be taken to get things started to get it mapped out.
Yep, that's something we'll look into.
And that is something that the county assessor's employee can make those points known on the right-of-way as long as he's not on private property, correct?
The county surveyor?
Surveyor.
Yes.
He can do that in the right-of-way, but not any work on private property, if I understand correctly.
Yeah, I'm not certain about that, but all these marks should be in the right-of-way, so yeah, it should be something that they can just do in the right-of-way.
With the exception of, we're sort of a little bit in limbo, as you know, with county surveyor, number of employees, who they are. And if you look at the duties of the county surveyors to establish corners, quartered corners, et cetera, there's a very few limited number of items that they're supposed to do, and they will remind us of us if they choose not to do it. And so that's my, that's the reason I think it's important that we took time to write this and that we start that process happening. The other question I had is just looking at the profile of the road, you know, I think we're supposed to have a 42-inch bury minimum, which probably, that's not. Is this, what is this water line tying to?
That, I'm not sure, Joe.
I mean, I don't think there's a public.
No, I think this service is just simply a water source for a stockwell that they're just crossing the road.
Right. And so that, I think, we need to make sure that when we come to that ditch profile, it would be real easy for a person to go 48 inches in the road and just keep going, because when you bore, you don't bore like this. If you're going to bore, you bore straight through, right? So we need to make sure that 42 inches is below the lowest point of our burrow. Okay? We got to remember that. So that might be a six, seven, eight-foot bury in the road. Okay, so that's all I'm getting at is, and so, enough said. Any other comments or questions? Rule call vote, please.
I don't think we have a motion.
Pardon me?
No motion yet.
Oh, well, then I guess we don't have a rule call vote after that long.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that you sign the right-of-way application submitted by Ryan Schur.
Second.
I apologize for going on. I thought we had a motion in a second. I wouldn't even have been talking about it. I have a motion in a second. Now, do we have any discussion?
I have to reinforce the chairman's statement. We put these regs in place for a reason, and I want to see us get more stringent on identifying where they're at, because 10 years from now or 20 years from now, nobody's going to be in the room that remembers putting this line in or any other, and then you run into problems, because nobody knows where it is. They think they know where it is, but they don't know where it is.
Any questions, comments? Rule call vote, please. Tammy?
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir. It's 9:19. We will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization. Again, remind us that we do follow the Open Meetings Act, a copy of which is posted at the entry of the room. The first quarter of business is to approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held May 13, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on May 13, 2024.
Second.
Motion to second. Discussion. Rule call vote.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Certificate correction or refund is submitted by the county assessor. I seen that. And thank you, young lady, for coming up. Would you identify yourself, please?
Julie Stinger, Lincoln County Assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Julie.
I told the assessor that I probably was going to come and have her address this next item, as it's a little bit, it may have some confusion for some of the public. Please go ahead.
Yep. So what you have in front of you are property valuation changes that are in front of you due to the fact that on the March 19 certification date, our review of the south side, we didn't get completely through all the data entry work. My appraisers didn't get everything reviewed that they had done. We just simply ran out of time. We did put in a request with the Department of Revenue, and they did give us a few days, an extension, but during that day, we had a snow day that kind of slowed us down an extra day, too. Long story short is, we still did not get through about three to four of the boxes that we had our property record cards routed in for the south side. All the other property record cards had been reviewed and changes made. In talking to the Department of Revenue, you know, they were not able to grant us any more days just for the fact that there's a timeline that our statistics and everything has to be submitted to the Tax Equalization Review Commission by a certain date. So she just suggested that we go ahead and submit everything as is, and then go ahead and finish our complete review of those few boxes, and then anything that had a change like this come before the board as a county board changes, either an overvalued or undervalued property. So what you have in front of you are those 120 parcels that had some changes to them, but most of them were a quality or condition change that with our new Vanguard system and the new costing to be equalized with other houses in that neighborhood. They, you know, they looked at everything really close. It's the, it was the onsite physical review and inspection that we do every six years. And in doing so, like I said, some of the quality and conditions were changed to be equalized, more equalized throughout the neighborhood. So that can cause, you know, an up or down valuation change. So you will see on your listing that if the value went, you know, up or down, it was either overvalued or undervalued property.
So would there be any way, since this was something the assessor would ordinarily came out and would be not a Board of Equalization thing, could the Board of Equalization maybe just take those that are undervalued so that we look like the good guy for lowering the amount? That probably is not possible, is it?
It really wouldn't be fair to the other ones that we did get done on time, yeah. It might not look so good after all.
So I just wanted the public to understand this is something that ordinarily we would not be doing right now as a Board of Equalization, but it was a timing matter with the workload at the assessor's office, so.
And these will go out to the taxpayers about the exact same time that we're going to be sending the yellow postcard notices to all the taxpayers that had a valuation change. They'll get one whether the value went up or down. So we wanted these values to be in place when they get their postcards. The postcards will reflect these same values, because if we didn't, and then we sent them a yellow postcard, and then we did these changes after that, then they're really going to be confused. So we kind of wanted everything to be coincided time-wise.
And mitigating the confusion factor, and people know they want to protest anything.
Yep.
They know exactly what it is.
So the only thing that went up in value, you know, yeah, that, you know, they are, can come right in in June and protest the valuation.
And so like a, you know, a little note or a little letter and with them explaining that would really, really help for people that would be confusing, okay?
Julie, would that be the first notice that they would receive, that there was a change in the valuation?
The clerk's office has to send them out, is it, do they have seven or 10 days that you have to get this notice out to them that this happened?
Seven days that they're ready to go.
That they're ready to go. So they will probably get this notification first, and then their postcards will follow.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Julie, just browsing this, different pages, it doesn't look like any of the changes, whether it was up or down, are really significant, although any changes.
Right, right.
Not always good unless you're on the ones that are going down, but none of them seem to really jump out at me.
Unless we look at page four and look at the error on number 31. Number 31 should be 258, 464. It went from 239 to 358, 464. That they might have some heartburn about.
Yeah.
So I just want to point out that that was an error that I did find.
And that one, I mean, without pulling this, there could have been something else that was missed at the same time. I was just saying the majority was a quality and condition.
No, I mean, if you look at the two numbers, they just add up wrong. I think it was just a, they just put a three rather than a two, Julie, because the other two work out.
Yeah, I think that's a typo.
Right. Okay, yeah, we better get that fixed. Better make sure that's --
So I would entertain a motion. We have further discussion.
We can note that one.
Okay, so I'll take a stab at this then. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, as the Board of Equalization, approve the valuation changes for 2024 on parcels listed in the list, number one through 119, with a correction to, no, that's number 10 that was not included on the first page.
I think there's 120 or 121.
120.
There's one on the very last page.
Say your, say your entity on the page. That's not what's on my phone. 13. There are 12 full pages and 13 pages. Let me see your first picture of the page. Let me see your first picture, Joe. Because I, mine has number 10 written on that single one. I don't have one listed for number 10 here, so that's what I confuse.
So let's, let's, as, as a discussion...
So, let me, let me take a stab at this, all right? My motion is, we, as the Board of Equalization, approve the 2024 property valuation changes for parcels listed on the attachment that will be part of the record, uh, number one through 120, with a correction to number 31 on page four, um, with the appropriate math corrected. Does that work?
Second. Yes, and that math you might check, I think should be 258, 464, I believe.
What did I get?
Any other questions or comments?
Just a note, the chairman may have to sign all 13 pages to complete it once we vote.
Very good.
So I'll pass that around for...
Thanks for the great news.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Tammy, roll call vote.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wiens.
Aye.
Buhler.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Thanks, Julie.
We'll see what it says on here. Yeah. Could you just have the hand of nature?
I'm writing as fast as I can.
No pressure on that number one, see, is there...
No.
Terry, are you gonna be joining us during protest season?
Multiple. Off and on, yes.
Keeping us in line.
Good morning, Nishankai, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I didn't make it, but it's on my list today. Did you go?
Yeah.
Yeah, was it good?
It was nice.
Good.
Which one?
Did you leave me anything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. TJ Maxx.
Oh, we were there. Our wallet felt it.
We were branded. We're branded again, and again, and again.
My wife and kids were really excited.
What time did you go?
Uh, right after church.
Those lines were really long.
Yeah, they were.
That's why I hung today.
It's good to see, it's good to see more retail options.
There's a couple of stores there that I haven't made it to yet, so...
You gotta get out and see what your company has to offer.
That's right, I do. Sounds like a good date for me and my granddaughter now that she's out of school.
Probably the lower V and I score, so you're right by each other.
Yeah, good deal.
There's also the back office there. Oh, yeah. Let me know if I missed one.
You know, if you did, that's okay. We'll have plenty to take care of that.
I have a pretty good stack of claims this week, too.
Can't get started on those. Yeah, I guess as well, gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Quink, nudge, nudge.
Mine didn't get much reaction, thanks for the backup.
Get all the big fat ones.
We did it okay, it is 120 on here.
I have a pretty good stack of claims this week, too.
Can't get started on those. Yeah, I guess as well, gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Quink, nudge, nudge.
Mine didn't get much reaction, thanks for the backup.
Get all the big fat ones.
Based on how the conversation was. Was it based on how the conversation was?
Yeah, exactly.
That one goes back to Todd.
If these weren't stapled, I could pass them for you.
This would be a good time to do this, but, uh, chairman, we're right. You know, I'm not sure why, but when we say things, seems like we're always waiting on that district plan.
By the way, that way, when he throws something at you...
That looks a little life-like, that message. Yes, I think I understand better now.
By the way, congratulations on your...
It was a hard call. I'm glad Joe won, because he had to. January 1, next year, he belongs to certain one of my stories. There he is. Next item is, uh, pardon me? A adjourned. Thank you very much. Our next item is to adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization to reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our next commissioner item is to discuss the remaining ARPA funds held by Lincoln County. I checked with Becky to see maybe how this got on, and I'm not sure anybody requested it. I think that we need to reconvene. Did I not reconvene?
No.
George, you need to re-adjourn, yes.
Oh, I thought I said...
Re-adjourn.
Okay, I apologize, and I thought I said to reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, but I apologize.
I will be happy.
We, we will reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, thank you. Uh, 9:30 was a discussion item for the remaining ARPA funds held by Lincoln County. Um, I'm not really sure if anybody requested this to be on there.
I did, a long time ago, quite, uh, quite a while ago.
Okay, but not just this time right now?
No, not, 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 I did not re-request, but I think my, my request was put on file, so...
Thank you.
Um, we did have our most recent ARPA fund audit, which West Central Nebraska Development District, um, assisted Becky's office with. I'm not sure, Nicole, how many of the people out of your office participated in it, but Amber did report to me that the numbers balanced, everything is, um, good as far as the audit was, and so the amount that was on our most recent, uh, finance report is the amount that, that is remaining in that account. I believe, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, that those funds need to be committed by the last day of this year, and we have all of next year to expend the monies, so...
The, the money has to be encumbered by the end of this year. On a sub-grant award, it does not have to be spent, you just have to sub-award it. Um, on the money that we have that we're purchasing things with, the items need to be under contract and on their way by the end of the year.
Oh, okay. That speeds things up a bit. So I thought with the audit being done and everything being balanced, that now is a good time for us to start exploring possibilities and having discussions.
What, what is the amount left in there?
Uh, 360...
I got mine in my file over there. 36 something.
366, 678.86.
The time for the discussion, in my personal opinion, is when we adopt our new budget, and we know where we're at, from the tax asking. And then that, to me, that, that weighs in dramatically on where we, where or when we spend these monies before the end of the year, if in fact we have to.
Yeah, that's a good point, uh, and I think, uh, we had used those funds very judiciously in the past to assist the road department to, uh, improve their inventory of equipment, and, um, that would certainly, uh, fall in line with my thoughts as well, and, uh, when road department comes, and other departments come to us with their budgets in, uh, July, that would be sure, sure would be something that I would be looking at for, uh, possibilities there to help out on their budget.
I second that thought.
The other discussion. What was that, what was that number again? I...
Okay. Tyler, thank you for that clarification on the...
Yeah, 'cause that changes my, a little bit of how my understanding on when they had to be spent, used up.
It is the, essentially the same way that the CARES money was, that they could run it four years ago, um, and we ran right down to the wire on that, too.
I think it's a good thing, though, that we didn't spend it all as soon as they came in, that we've, as Commissioner Woodruff said, we've been very judicious with the, treating that resource prudently, so...
And we also need to bear in mind where a large portion of that went, and, uh, be meaningful of that, so... I was pretty much on board with your thinking also, Kent, that that's an appropriate time is when we pull part of the grid.
In July, we'll be here before we, in the blink of an eye.
Yeah, sure will be. Well, give us three minutes to sign a couple of claims here before our next agenda item. I can do a guess, that was the 10 o'clock?
Yeah, if we can offset some of the roads department or sheriff's department, that remaining balance, that'd be a good thing. We used, used our funds for the technology for the survey. Michaela?
Might be. We have a couple other things that we're exploring there, but I'm not sure where we're at, but, Joe?
On the rabbit...
Does anybody know where this claim may have originated from? I assume the clerk's office.
We've seen a whole bunch of them today. Is that for the rural fire?
No, just in here, local, so I have...
Oh, oh, village EMS.
So I have, assume that's what it is.
Yeah. We've had a whole bunch of the rural fire departments, that one's just labeled a little differently, I think.
It's 9:45. Next agenda item is to discuss and consider the purchase of a retriever disc for the Department of Roads. Gentlemen, please identify...
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
Brian Gloss, Deputy Highway Superintendent.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so this is a quote for a, an attachment we'd like to get for our motor graders. And it's a front-mount, uh, retriever disc for grooming and, I guess, helping to pull up the shoulders and...
Reclaim some material?
Yep.
Looks to me like it's probably, uh, an extremely, uh, good piece of equipment to have, myself.
Yes, it is.
Jason, well, this, uh, this system, keeping that early growth along the shoulder down, so that you don't have clumps when you, you're pulling material?
Yeah, it will, and, uh, we, we actually have two of these currently, um, so we have one in the Maxwell area, we have one in the, uh, Hershey area, and... So we have one in the Maxwell area, we have one in the Hershey area, and this one would be slated for the North Platte area. It seems like the time of year is the spring, whenever these are used heavily, and trying to spread two. Crown it way up and completely out of the way, so you can do normal operations with it, so.
Jason, none of our motor graders currently have an attachment like this on there?
No, this is something that's very new and is very unique, yeah.
You know, I am confused about, I thought slope adjusting mold boards is nothing new.
The extension?
No, not the extension, the slope adjusting mold board, it says, not the end extension. So I'm confused, is this put an adjustment on our mold boards?
Well, this is an extension piece, so it goes on the side.
How is that much different than what we just did?
Normal one goes like this, it's still welded, now there's a piece on the end that goes like this.
Right. And what was the last piece? What did that do? Didn't it do a similar thing?
Yes.
Something that you had worked in there?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I'm going to make a motion that we purchase the, approve the purchase of a slope adjusting mold board for the Department of Roads.
Second.
Sorry. Roll call, Wood.
You can have this one.
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did you hear something?
So we do checks there?
have sent out, that we issued, so now it needs to go to the Department of Roads.
I'd like to just take them back.
I don't think we gave them. State's going to be interested in that.
I feel like I'm just not gaining anything out of that pile.
I heard a couple of people squeaking, they might have made a sign, these claims, so.
I suppose the lawyers were better earlier, better.
The next item is to discuss and consider a tort claim submitted by Stephen Moore. It's an incident occurring on May 6, 2024. I think we have a copy of that in our information over the weekend. Tyler, that being a tort claim, would you weigh in on this, please?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, as you're well aware, the county gets a number of tort claims for minor things, relatively minor things, in the grand scheme of the county's budget. Throughout the year, typically speaking, they will come before the board, the board will take no action on them, they will be forwarded to our insurance carrier, in this case probably sent it over to Tanner over at Hub, and they will take a look at that and either pay that out or not, that's whatever the contract says they're going to do. And then if it's not to the Mr. Moore's satisfaction, obviously he has recourse under the political subdivision tort claim act. So I would recommend that the board simply take no action on the matter at this time.
And forward it on to?
Yes, and obviously forward it on to our insurance carrier.
Okay. Are the Moores here? Would you like to come forward, please? Please just go ahead and sign in and state your name.
Stephen Moore.
Morning, sir.
Morning.
I think we have a copy of the, your statement here. Is there anything you would like to add, sir?
I pretty much had it all written in there. I mean, the vehicle was headed east on Walker Road, and it seemed to me that the gates on the bottom of the belly dump either need adjustment, weren't shut all the way because gravel was literally dumping out of it.
Okay.
And when I called the county office, the gal on the phone, wouldn't call him on the radio to have him stop, suggested that I turn around and chase him down, but instead I just went over to the deputy sheriff and talked to them.
Appreciate it, sir. We'll get it filed and from there. Thank you very much for coming, thank you. Do you want to make a motion? Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we submit or pass on to the insurance carrier the tort claim submitted by Stephen Moore on an incident occurring May 6, 2024.
Second.
Most than a second, need further discussion. Roll call.
Wood?
Aye.
Swings?
Aye.
Wood?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks, folks. Jury in the game, that I have no idea what happened on that thing, but we phoned calls to the gal or any of that, but, you know, might, it's a little, might have been a discussion, I don't know, he's here for the hall, he's like, I think you might have got a rock on it, because I just had to get a big rock.
Okay.
Just a thought. And that's very easy to happen, especially if you're hauling dirty crap. I'd like to see these claims coming through by you, Todd. Pretty good claim here for chemical, came up good work.
Maybe if the wind doesn't blow 60 mile an hour, you'll get to use some of that.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying.
It's been, it's been a little more favorable the last week.
Yeah, but it's going to rain, so. It has been tough, I've tried to...
It has been tough. Is, is most of the chemical you guys use for spraying rain resistant?
Yeah, four hours before.
Let it rain.
Yeah, was really able to get the washboard out of our road for the first time in about five years, actually this...
Surprises me how fast that comes back.
Yep. If you were a trooper standing up that long, my legs would be killing me.
I wasn't sitting down.
Oh, okay. You're trying to take care of it, Kim.
Thank you.
Sheriff wasn't able to attend, but it sounds like you had a nice memorial police officer's day.
Looked up. It was a great ceremony. His daughter graduated from high school with my son.
I'll ask about it.
It's a little shop for his son, and I'm living a quarter of a...
Storage. I think it looks a lot bigger than, because the piece of property is so small, I think it makes the building...
It really is bigger.
Yeah, our new building is gonna be about twice the size of that one. I think his kid's got bit by that collector bug too, so.
10:10, the next item is to discuss the renewal of the Emeritus Dental Contract.
Cole, do you have any insight on that?
No.
Kind of self-explanatory from the letter. Looks like they sent it to Becky and... Is there a slight increase?
Yeah, there's just a slight increase for this year, she said that was...
It's pretty minor, isn't it? I'm glad we have a period to, to, we can get our tail insurance through.
All in all, it looks like a pretty minor step up.
We didn't, we put it on the agenda because we didn't know if you wanted it to go to the benefits committee.
For me, we have time before this needs to be done. I wouldn't mind the benefits committee taking a look at this, simply from the fact that when we were...
July 1.
Right.
So you've got a little time.
We got a little bit of time. When we went with Emeritus for our dental insurance, there was conversation that they were really gonna be working hard to get more participation from the different providers. And to my knowledge, that has not happened. So...
It's not. It's been a time to take, take a run at them.
Exactly.
Aaron's gonna stop by and we're gonna have a quick talk about it in our office.
You mean Emeritus is?
The representative.
So that may be a good time for the committee to talk about it, perhaps.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't mind having the benefits committee take a look at this.
Okay. Comment is that perhaps it would be appropriate to have the benefits committee review this. We do have some time, I think we have a July 1 date on there. So if there's not an objection, I think that we will ask the county's benefit committee to review this and maybe report back to us. It doesn't appear to be a, you know, major increase when you look at the dollar wise. I understand we look at percentage, it's, there's some percentage there, but if that's the, the wish of this body, then that's, we'll just take no action and, and refer this to the benefits committee.
Well, it is. I think that's an appropriate comment about the providers or the lack thereof, or maybe limited lesson you'd want it to be in that community for options for dentists. So this is the time to, to look at it.
We do have the 90th U, 90 UNC as part of the benefit, but I'd, I'd still like to see more providers participate in this, and I'd like to have that conversation with Emeritus, so.
We, you know, it might be something that perhaps some of the benefit committee might have, wanna reach out to a half dozen providers and say why or why not. You know, we can also be proactive, so. Okay. We will go that way then. And I'll just wait to hear back from the benefits committee here in the next three, four weeks as to when we might have this back on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No, it pretty just slipped in.
Yep.
I like it.
How long have they been doing that? I know that Trooper Nicholson has been doing some of her certifications in Colorado to get everything wrapped up, so.
Literally?
It's not the largest aircraft.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for the weak vertigo.
I think the long-term goal with their wing is to get a whirlybird out of a helicopter. So... That'll be a little bit more conducive for what we need if we're out here.
Good morning, Dave.
Get somebody out in the riverbed trying to hide. Stay... Exactly. Get that heat camera out, be able to pinpoint right where they are.
I'm, I just had no idea they made paper for a second.
Uh-oh.
Yours, Frank.
I don't know where, I just noticed it. But that isn't so clean.
There's postage.
No, different amount.
Yeah, I just saw that.
Got to the end of the claims.
I was done 20 minutes ago.
Sounds, sounds like bragging to me.
Mr. Chairman. Next item is a closed session item. It's a closed session to discuss security for the Lincoln Kennedy Department of Weeds to consider possible action on security upgrades to the Weeds Department. I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session for that purpose with the following people remaining in the room. The county board, our legal counsel, Mr. Pate with the IT department, and the director of the Weeds Department. Pardon me? And Mr. Boyer.
Chairman, I would move to go into closed session to discuss...
Deployment of security personnel. Deployment of security personnel.
For the purpose of discussing deployment of security personnel.
Second. Almost in a second, roll call.
Aye.
Wood?
Aye.
Friends?
Aye.
Aye, we will now be going into closed session to discuss the deployment of security personnel and equipment. Aye, we will now be going into closed session to discuss the deployment of security personnel and equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot. I can just turn it off.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and we come out of closed session at 10:41.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Brenn?
Aye.
Luer? Aye.
Aye.
Hughling?
Aye. Second portion of this 1020 item is possible, I consider possible action on security upgrades for the Wee Department. We are going to table this, I believe, until next week, and is that my understanding?
Yep.
Okay. This will carry over until next week. 10:30.
Val.
There's a very patient gentleman waiting in the office. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How you guys doing?
Good.
Doing well, Val. How are you?
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. You too.
Looks like you know the program, so.
Better.
That was first rodeo. I'm gonna hit your mic button.
My second rodeo.
There. Thank you.
All right, there I am. Well, thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to-
And Sal, you are?
I am Val Janzanty. I'm representing Congressman Adrian Smith. I'm his community liaison out of Scotts Bluff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please.
All right. I wanted to give you a couple little updates on things that he's been working with lately. One of the things that just came out recently is it's a bill called Keep Your Hands Off Our Home Appliance Act. Sounds pretty deep, doesn't it? Well, I think what it's mainly about-
I was joking.
Yeah. There's a lot of regulations coming out right now where they're looking to even eliminate gas stoves down the road, so that's, and he's definitely opposed to that. So, he's working on that. That's one of the things he's working with. And he's been busy with a bill that's for lowering cost of childcare for families. I'll just go through the, it's called the Small Business Dependent Care FSA Opportunity Act, and this legislation creates a new tax credit for small businesses with people 100 employees or less, and it's a startup cost for dependent care flexible spending accounts. So, it'll help basically, if you have that small business, they would give you some incentives and cash to help after-school programs and other forms of daycare and that type of thing to just help out in that situation. Because we know, we're all aware that daycare's a big issue right now with jobs and, you know, I live a block away from the elementary school in Garing, and they had their shop class type people, they're building a brand new daycare center, so that, you know, there's just such a shortage of that right now.
That's a beautiful elementary school up there, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It's nice. All right, let's see where, oh, and he's been supporting, this is more western and northern part, he's, there's a grant from the Department of Labor, or the, they're trying to increase the CDL program at WNCC and also in Northeast Community College because, as we're all aware of, there's a lot of, lot of need for new CDL people, so he's been pushing that, trying to help. They're gonna expand the programs and make things a little more attractive for people wanting to join that type of thing, so. All right, where are we at here? Might as well mention the post office stuff. He and both senators are still trying to put pressure on Postmaster General to reconsider. I know they moved it to January 1st before they do anything, but that's not, that's not enough at this point, so.
Needs to be permanent.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what he wants, so. That's my teeny bit here for now, if that's-
What's your, if you're done, Valerio, what's your take on that? Is, does the postal authority have the same insulation, I'll use that word, as the GSA? I don't, you probably are not aware, but a few years ago, the GSA raised the rates from their building here-
Okay.
-to the post office to the point where they couldn't manage to stay in that building, and we had efforts at the Senate level, congressmen wanted to try to influence that decision and say, hey, you know, it's an entity that serves the public and created as a public service, and why can't you just simply allow them space? And they pretty much told our congressional representatives to go fly kites. There was no, there was such a bureaucracy in the GSA that there was no way to impact that decision.
I think that's kind of similar in-
Is this a similar problem?
Kind of similar, but I think with enough pressure, you know, you hope that they're gonna say, all right, this is, we're disturbing and upsetting a huge chunk in Nebraska plus other rural areas, you know, that we're gonna lose services, and, you know, if you're relying on medicines to be shipped by mail, they get there late, you know, and you're having issues with that, or like when we were at that meeting here in end of March, one lady from Cherry County said, well, I'm old school. I do everything by check and write, things like that way, so my bill gets here late, my check goes out, it's late, then I'm getting penalized for it, and so they think sending it to Denver's gonna make it better? Not a chance. Not a chance.
I know it's markup week for the farm bill in the House. Where's the congressman at on that?
Well, he's been working with it constantly, so I don't know exactly what little steps are, you know, if they're gaining or not. I know that, I mean, that should've been done quite a while ago, obviously.
A long time ago.
But every time he's in the district, he tries to hit people that are affected by that, you know, specific businesses, organizations, and that, so he'll bring that information back and tell them what he knows, so, yeah.
Very good. Questions for?
Val.
Thank you for bringing us up to date.
Well, thanks. I appreciate you having me here.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Next item is, I'm assuming, is there a need for a closed session?
I need a couple of them closed sessions, so we'll take care of one of them this week. Can I have a short one for a pending or imminent litigation, please?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we go into closed session for a, with respect to pending or imminent litigation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Luer? Aye. Brenn?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd have a hand, please, as well.
Pardon me?
If you'd have a hand, please, as well.
Yes. So, those remaining in the room will be the five commissioners, our legal counsel, and the more administrative assistant.
You guys are getting a workout.